I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you very much. Alder Revere, sorry, Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Vitiver.
Here.
Alder Vitiver is present. Aldo Helia.
Here.
Aldo Helia is present. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin.
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry.
Here.
Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan is excused. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is present. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole is present. Aldo Grover Rajan.
Here.
Aldo Grover Rajan is present. Aldo Uguir.
Present.
Aldo Uguir is present. Aldo Harrington McKenney.
Present.
Aldo Harrington McKenney is present. Aldo Knox.
Present.
Aldo Knox is present. Aldo Latimer Burris.
Here.
Aldo Latimer Burris is present. Aldo Madison.
Here.
Aldo Madison is present. Aldo Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Aldo Martinez Rutherford is present. Aldo Miazze.
Present.
Aldo Miazze is present. Aldo Rumel.
Present.
Aldo Rumel is present. Madam Mayor, we have a form. Oh, sorry, Aldo Tischler, I apologize.
Oh, that's all right. I'm I'm here.
Very well. Aldo Tischler is present as well. Thank you.
Thank you. As usual, I'll remind us that we are here to do the business of the people of the city of Madison, and I ask that we do so with kindness and grace and with respect for each other, and in particular that all concerned refrain from using profanity in their remarks, and Alders should remember to address the chair. And we have two honoring resolutions to start today's meeting. The first is Legisstar eight six one two nine, congratulating the Eastside News on their one hundredth anniversary. And for this resolution, I will turn first to Aldo Martinez Rutherford.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Eastside News is a community newspaper covering the east side of Madison, and whereas Eastside News is published six times each year by Goodman Community Center, providing super local news and information about events, issues, resources, and programs at Goodman and in the east side of Madison. And whereas in nineteen twelve, A. W. Larson first published two issues of the Eastside News before Marshall Brown officially started regularly publishing Eastside News on December fourth, nineteen twenty-four, from his print shop near Shank's Corner. And whereas the ownership was passed through multiple publishers since Marshall Brown created the first modern issue of Eastside News before pushing uh pausing sometime in the latter half of the nineteen sixties or seventies. And whereas in February of nineteen eighty-one, the Atwood Community Center, which is now known as Goodman Community Center, relaunched the publication of the Eastside News and.
Whereas the Goodman Community Center, formerly the Atwood Community Center, has since been producing the Eastside News continuously for forty-three years and whereas more than twelve thousand copies of the Eastside News are mailed directly to households in the Goodman Community Center's service area, as well as five thousand more to subscribers throughout Madison. And whereas copies of the Eastside News can be found at several area businesses as well as the Goodman Community Center. And whereas December fourth, two thousand and four marks the one hundredth anniversary of the Eastside News. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Madison congratulates Eastside News on their one hundredth anniversary.
Thank you, Alders. We'll take that as moved by Aldo Martinez Rutherford and seconded by Aldo Rumel. And we have with us tonight to accept the resolution David Link from the Goodman Community Center. David, do you want to say a few words? You're muted.
I do. On behalf of Eastside News and the Goodman Community Center, I am truly humbled by this recognition bestowed by the Madison Common Council on our little community newspaper. But Marshall Brown began in nineteen twenty-four from his Winnebago Street print shop, the Goodman Community Center continues. Eastside News has always been about the community. Is it a medium where neighbors can learn about things, including their fellow neighbors, right where they live? We cover everything east side, from the neighbor who has a collection of deposit bags from the bank at Shank's Corners to the resident who recycles plastic to make bowls and planters, to the new restaurant or store down the street, or to heavier articles like the work being done to bring awareness and provide resources on social isolation for older adults. I would like to thank all the volunteers and staff whose east side spirit has kept the newspaper going. I would also like to thank the advertisers. Without their support, it would be very difficult to produce six issues a year. In a world where print media is struggling, it is an honor so many residents still look forward to receiving and supporting a little community-produced newspaper.
Thank you. We appreciate you carrying on this hundred-year tradition. And there is a parchment, which I assume either staff or Alders will arrange to get to the center for that recognition. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none is, oh, Aldo Rumel, go ahead.
I just want to take a moment to thank you, David. You've always been so generous and always given me a little slack when I was late with stuff, and I appreciate that. But you do a marvelous job. It's just, I mean, you capture them from the mundane stories of that, like, family history that went on for years to like what's going on at the center and and just even the bigger social issues facing our the east side. It's just just a wonderful resource that you provide. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Martinez Rutherford?
Yes, and I will echo what Marshall Rumel said. Um, to have a print newspaper that has been in business this long and and continues to uh provide the community with very hyper-local, you know, coverage and really focusing on on um the people of the east side, it's an honor to to have you in the district and uh on our east side. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. If no other Alders in the queue, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote in favor, and thank you again, David, and congratulations to the Goodman Community Center.
You.
Our second honoring resolution is Legisstar eight six one three zero, expressing sincere appreciation to retired Madison Police Department Captain Jason Friedman for his twenty-seven years of dedicated service to the city of Madison. And for this resolution, I'll turn to President Figaro Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Whereas Jason Friedman first joined the Madison Police Department as an officer in nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas Jason Freeman recently retired from the MPD and served in many capacities, including the promoted position positions of sergeant beginning in two thousand and seven, lieutenant beginning in two thousand and fourteen, and captain captain beginning in two thousand and seventeen. And whereas retired Captain Jason Freeman served through the entire city of Madison in many roles during his career, including the positions of patrol officer, training officer, neighborhood officer, patrol patrol sergeant, sergeant and lieutenant of the Dane County Narcotics Task Force, captain of the Central District, and last as the captain of the Midtown District. And where whereas retired Captain Jason Freeman also served many years as a team member and commander of the MPD SWAT team, as well as commander of the MPD Peer Support Team. And whereas retired Captain Jason Freeman always prioritized community policing and effective problem problem solving while serving the entire Madison community. And whereas retired Captain Jason Freeman always led his fellow members of the MPD with dedication, distinction, and reliable calm leadership every day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council expressed their sincere appreciation to retired Madison Police Department Captain Jason Freeman for his years of dedicated services and particularly for his final final years of serving, leading the Midtown Police District.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, we'll take that as moved by President Figaro Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, we do have emphasis on retired Captain Friedman. Uh, I had to say that word a lot of times, Captain. Um, here to accept the resolution. Captain, did you want to say a few words?
I would, Mayor. Thank you. Um. Although I find myself unusually at a bit of a loss of words uh tonight. Uh, thank you, uh, President Figaro Cole. This is a unexpected but greatly appreciated recognition. Uh, I started my service with the city in nineteen ninety-two in the public library, spent time uh in the city attorney's office and the CDA. Uh, and of course, the last twenty-seven years with the Madison Police Department uh as as someone with much more prestige and stature, uh, once said in another context in another century, I have grown old and service to my city, but I I wouldn't do anything different. It's been an honor. Uh, it's been a fantastic ride. Uh, grateful for all the opportunities that I've had and for the the colleagues that I've worked with. I mean, obviously, within the police department, friends, uh mentors, leaders, but I did a quick count. I worked directly with eight of you that are here tonight. Uh, and uh in the council and and many others who over the years and uh I just, I I really appreciate this. Uh, again, it was unexpected, but uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for it.
Thank you, Captain. I think all eight may want to speak tonight. Um, we have an unprecedented queue. Uh, so we'll start with Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, uh, you were a great help to me when I was first elected District Thirteen Alder in two thousand and nineteen. I've appreciated so much for many conversations. Uh, you challenged me to be a better Alder. We worked together on difficult issues, uh, challenges around Bredingham Park and other parts of District Thirteen. You were you were a real partner. And it's, you know, it's really not fair for me to say I'm sad that you are retiring, but I am. I, you know, I I want to be happy for you, Jason, but I'm sad. You're gonna be missed. You've done such you left behind big shoes to fill. I'm sure that Captain Shannon, I can't remember her last name, but I'm sure she'll be great. But you're gonna be missed, and a lot of affection and respect for you, Jason. Good luck in all that you do.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Revere?
Thank thank you, Mayor. Uh, I too will miss you very much, Jason. Uh, and and uh you actually stole one of the um memories I have of you that I was going to share with my colleagues here, and that is that unlike everybody else, we did not first meet at MPD, of course. Uh, I was a frequent visitor of yours in the city attorney's office, as you were the first face when I walked in as a very uh young Alder. And I know you were across the street at CDA uh as as well before you became an officer. So uh, the resolution doesn't speak to those, but but as you said, you've been a longtime civil servant here in the city and uh really, and and your sister as well, as some of us know. Uh, so we really appreciate um the tremendous legacy of public service that you leave. And I might be sharing breaking news with with folks that aren't in the know, but but congratulations are certainly in order for you, not just on your well-deserved retirement, but we know you're way too young to really retire. And for those that don't know, Jason is moving on and unfortunately leaving our community to become the newly minted police chief in Grand Forks. Uh, that 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 new uh position will start for you, I guess I understand, early in the new year, sometime in January. So uh, I knew that there's no way you would be retired because you love your work so much. You love your public service so much. I can't tell you how much of a joy it was, uh, working together with you so closely the years you were the Central District Police Commander. I really appreciated your extraordinary uh concern for uh alcohol-licensed establishments and and what goes with that. You took your role as the MPD representative on the Alcohol License Review Committee very seriously, and I'll always remember that and appreciate you for that as well, Jason. So anyway, as I say, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Moreover, congratulations on your new position in North Dakota. And uh, really can't thank you enough for your great legacy of public service here. Godspeed, my friend.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Jason. It's been a while since um I worked with you as Central District Captain, which was from about twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, more or less. And I just took a quick look at my emails and put your name in. And I gotta say, you did a stellar job keeping all of us downtown Alders up to speed on issues. We communicated on a regular regular basis on, you know, whether it was alcohol issues, because I have a few in the district, the beacon, whether it was a drug house, or even the bike path and the safety cameras that we worked together to to install. You were always attentive, and I just think you just present to, you know, you set an example of what a really great captain is. And I I wish you the best of luck in your new position. You're clearly chief, you know, material, so there I feel they're lucky and I'm happy for them and for you. So thank you so much and enjoy.
Thank you, Alder. President Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as as I as I have said before, district district and service area includes three of the six police districts, so includes the west, the south, and the midtown. So I don't have much to add to the sentiment of the resolution. And my colleagues accept that I value the collaboration and the many, many difficult and complex discussions we had had over the past few years, especially those discussions when we were not in agreement. Those were my favorite. I don't know, I'm always looking for a fight and you were ready to give me one. So I I just want you to know how much I appreciate that you allow me the space to to be myself and and give you my peace of mind, however it came out, and not take it personally, just having having the real conversations. I want you to know that. Uh, please enjoy your new chapter. Um, whatever life is ahead of you, I I'm sure it's gonna be great. So Jason just wanted to say thank you so much for your service. Um, yep, and don't forget Madison. I'm sure whenever you're in town, we'll um, love to have you for another Puerto Rican meal or something like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Uguir?
Thank you, Chair. And Captain Friedman, I just want to thank you for being so available both before I became an Alder and subsequently uh by email or in person. I've always appreciated that time, your wise counsel, uh, your efforts to educate me in city policing. And uh, I think every time that we met, you always insisted on me calling you Jason, and I wouldn't. Um, but as we discussed, that's uh that's because of all those blue uniforms and my family background. You will always be Captain Friedman. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Vitiver?
I'm gonna jump on this thank you train um and say thank you to Captain Friedman um for your work uh in Midtown, which is in District Five, which I am so privileged to get to represent. Um, you have always been so forthright, so accommodating, so available. And that is something that um I want to commend you on and look forward to working with your replacement. Um, and hope that I have uh just as wonderful of a relationship with Midtown going forward and um also wish you all the best going forward, and I'm very excited for what you have coming. Um, and as my colleague said, please don't forget us here in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Tischler?
Yeah, Captain Freeman, I want to just, on behalf of uh residents of District District eleven, I want to thank you for your years of service and me personally, I I I always enjoyed our conversations and uh, yeah, you're gonna you're gonna be missed here. Uh, so uh, good luck in the next chapter, and I guess next time I'll be calling you chief, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Um, I've no other Alders in the queue, so Captain Friedman, let me add my thanks as well um to the councils. And I really appreciate not only your years of service in the police department, but also in other departments with the city. And you will be missed, and we do all wish you the absolute best in your next adventure and and hope that you will come back and visit us often, although and they might not want to let you go uh once you get there, so uh we would understand that. And but best to you and uh uh good luck in the new job. And it has been moved and seconded and discussed. Uh, so is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that vote is recorded. Congratulations again, Captain. And that will bring us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda, Aldo Madison?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly note for item number thirty-nine, which is eight, five, seven, seven, eight. I served on the Market Ready Market Ready Committee way back in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen in Little Tibet Marketing Cafe. Um, took part in that program. I learned at uh Economic Development Committee recently, but I don't think that would hamper my being able to vote on this fairly.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Vitiver?
I need to disclose that on items thirty-seven, eighty, and ninety-two, I am an employee of the Department of Health Services, and that will not affect my vote on any of these matters.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any further disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda, President Figaro Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, or two, items which Alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items that are supermajority items. Supermajority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Legisstar item eighty-six, one, seven, six, authorizing the city of Madison on behalf of the Greater Madison MPO to execute a grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation, the US US DOT, for up to one point twenty-five million dollars um for the Safe Streets Community Safety Enhancement Partnership Program, and amending the twenty twenty-five adopted operating budget to a set one million dollars in grant funding from the US DOT, authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the resulting grant agreement and to sign sub-agreements with the participating local agencies. Fifteen votes required. Legisstar item eighty-five, four, eight, two, amending the public health operating budget to accept Wisconsin Department of Health Services grant funding for one FTE disease intervention specialist to support linkages to care for people who use drugs. Fifteen votes required. Legisstar file eight, five, seven, nine, eight, approving the city of Madison application to the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin Office of Energy Innovation, twenty twenty-three Energy Innovation Grant Program for the project called Monona Terrace Geothermal Feasibility Study, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the associated grant agreement with the PSC dash OEI, amending the twenty twenty-four adopted capital budget to accept a grant award of of fifty thousand dollars in state funding, and approving the sole source contract with Hamill, Green, and Abernson Incorporated as a grant partner. Uh, fifteen votes required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Legisstar number eight, five, seven, seven, nine, amending section of the Madison General Ordinance thirty-nine dot thirty-nine dot zero, three, section eight, I, three, B. related to the Equal Opportunity, Opportunities Ordinance to align Wisconsin with um, state law. The report from the Equal Opportunity Commission is, they, they didn't meet apparently, no, the report from the um, the Equal Opportunities Commission did not meet on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. However, the recommendation is to adopt. Um, register eight, six, two, one, three, amending sections of the general, of the Madison General Ordinance ten point zero, five, six, nine point one, three, six, thirty-eight point zero, seven, section eight, and thirty-three point twenty-seven, to eliminate the Street Use Staff Commission and assign their duties to relevant city staff. This is an introduction item and it has referrals for the Street Use Staff Commission for December tenth, twenty-twenty-four, and back to the common council on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Agenda items excluded by one request of Alders or two speakers registered by noon on November twenty-sixth. Register item eight, five, four, six, five, um, creating section twenty-eight point zero, twenty-two, two, zero, zero, six, nine, five, to the, of the Madison General Ordinance to change the zoning of property located at six nineteen, six ninety-nine West Mifflin Street from PD, which is Plan Development District, to UMX, which is Urban Mixed Use. Uh, we have registered speakers. Register item eighty-five, seven, two, nine, report of the mayor submitting resident committee, committee appointments. Um, we have registered speakers. And then register item fifty-two, register eight, five, one, ninety-three, approving a certified survey map of property owned by the With, With, Withembeck Historic Properties Limited Partnership located at six nineteen and six ninety-nine West Mifflin Street. I pulled that uh, item out because it's in relation to item seven and um, they should go together. Other than that, we don't have any introductions for the floor at this moment and there's no additional corrections to the agenda. And Mayor, I did not look at the, at the register report. I'm sorry. Sorry, no additional speakers. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, President Figaro Cole. We do have an additional speaker on item eleven. So that will be excluded as well. Are there other items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Latimer-Burrus?
Yes, Mayor, if I could exclude um, uh, item number eight, seven, eighty-seven, eight, six, one, six, nine, authorizing the forgiveness of one point six million dollar debt held by Madison Inc. Arena. Um, I'm just looking to change the referral date. Um, today it's on introduction without debate and I'd like to refer it to Finance Committee on one, six, and back to Council on one, twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, Alder, could you say that again?
Um, sure. I would just like to change the referral dates. Today, introduction without debate. Uh, to Finance Committee on one, six, and back to Council on one, twenty-eight.
All right, so um, so request to change uh, referral dates. Currently, that item is scheduled for Finance on December second and Council on December tenth. Uh, President Figaro Cole?
Uh, with respect to the dates, it's, I know this is an introduction item. Um, is it appropriate to ask if there's a contract involved on this?
Um, so yes, if there's, um, let's do this. Let's see if there's anything else uh, for the consent agenda and then we can handle this uh, referral possibly as part of the consent agenda. And possibly if there's disagreement, uh, we'd have to take it up at the end of the agenda.
Thank you.
And so are there any other items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda tonight? Alder Miyazey?
Oh, just add it to one oh four. Add my name to one oh four.
Alder Miyazey will be noted as sponsoring item one oh four?
Eight, six, two, one, nine. Thank you.
Uh, looks like the clerk has got that. Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Are there any other exclusions? Aldo Ahilahe?
For item eighty-seven, is uh, um, can we refer also January Economic Development? I don't know the timing. I can check.
Uh, yes, if you, if you would wanna move another referral, uh, we just need the date of the meeting, Alder, and we can discuss that.
Okay, hold on. Let me just, uh, so what was, what did Alder Burrus um, request?
The current referral schedule is Finance on December second and Council on December tenth. The proposed is Finance on January sixth and Council on January twenty-eighth. So it would be either a December or January Economic Development meeting.
Uh, let's see. January?
You know, why don't, why don't we go ahead and just exclude uh, item eighty-seven and we'll come back to it and give you time to look up that date and um, then we can ask questions about it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other items for exclusion from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none. Let me go through that again. So the supermajority items are thirty-five, thirty-seven, and forty-three. All require fifteen votes. Um, on item thirty-six, the recommendation is to adopt. On item sixty-nine, the referral dates will be Street Use Staff Commission on twelve, ten, and Common Council on one, four, on January fourteenth. Um, just to note that that is because of a change in the date of when the Street Use Staff Commission is meeting. And items that are excluded at this point in time are items seven, nine, eleven, fifty-two, and eighty-seven for the purpose of referral only. I will note also that uh, we did have a registrant um, on item eight. Um, item eight is for introduction only tonight. And there's a little bit of a quirk in the way that um, appointments are listed on the agenda. So usually we don't allow registrations on items that are for introduction. And so just um, to note for that person who is registered, Rachel Neal, and we won't be taking comment on item eight tonight and because it's for introduction only. So again, excluded are seven, nine, eleven, fifty-two, and eighty-seven. No introductions from the floor and no corrections at this point in time. So on the consent agenda, a motion please. President Figaro Cole?
Move to adopt.
Second, moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded and we will move on to public comment. And the first item, uh, where we have registrants wishing to speak um, is agenda item number seven, which creates sections of the Madison General Ordinance is to change the zoning at six nineteen through six ninety-nine West Mifflin Street from planned development to urban mixed use in District Four. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Emily Ann Hokinson of District Four. Do we have Emily with us?
Hi, yes.
Go ahead.
Hi. I would just like to instate that I, I do not support it at all whatsoever. I just wanna put out there, especially as a college student who has struggled with finding affordable housing here for the last two years, these apartment buildings that keep popping up, they're creating more and more issues with affordability. I'm extremely concerned, especially being a student who's primarily here at the school on a scholarship. And I myself have not been able to find affordable housing at all for next year. One of the areas that does sometimes allow that is the address that they are wishing to demolish. And I know that they're keeping, I think, six nineteen and six nine nine would maybe be just demolished. But it still promotes that idea of these profit companies coming in, taking away smaller apartment buildings that are able to provide more affordability. And again, it's just another high-rise that I don't think is necessary. I'm also incredibly concerned for the state of the environment in Madison because of the sheer amount of high-rises that have been added. They increase the effects of urban heat islands in the city and do not allow for proper wind currents to concur. And they also lead to increased pollution as well because air isn't, air quality isn't able to properly filter through. I'm just very concerned if these projects keep popping up over and over again. One, there's not affordability anymore in general. So these coming up more is just gonna contribute to that problem. And two, I'm also very concerned about the environmental impacts. And I'm concerned for the businesses that are in that area. One of the only reasons I can see the train biz, like businesses that are uh, a part of that train station area is because I can see it. Like, that's one of the only reasons I know they're there. If you put that building there, you're not gonna be able to see those businesses from one side, completely taking them out of the picture and possibly harming their businesses as well. And I think that Madison used to be built on small businesses and affordability and inclusion. And now it's catering to out-of-state students who are usually here with a lot of money and can afford these private comp, these private apartment buildings. And no one else is able to, especially in-state students or just your average college student isn't either. And I think if we keep letting these developments come up all over Madison, we're not only losing the authenticity of the city, but we're losing affordable housing. And these people who are a part of these apartment companies, they are
About thirty seconds left?
Okay, and they're driven by greed. And all I'm trying to say is that if these people continue to come in here, they're not living in the city. The people who are living in the city of Madison are us, the students, the faculty. We live in the city. These people don't. And I don't think that they should be able to determine how affordable our housing is.
Thank you. That's the only registrant we have wishing to speak on item seven. Are there questions for this registrant or any of the folks registered as available to answer questions? Seeing none. Alder Bennett?
Uh, I don't have the registrant list in front of me, but is anyone from the development team available?
Um, yes, it looks like uh, we have at least Nathan Waterer, who's representing Trinitas Development. Do we have Nathan with us? Thought I saw him.
Mayor Linda Irving is also registered, available to answer questions. She's the principal developer.
Thank you. Can we have Linda Irving then? So we've Lind, both Linda and Nathan are here, Alder.
Okay, one or the other, whoever wants to answer. Um, I was wondering, as you may know, Madison now has a, um, a, a new ordinance that allows for additional um, stories if you include affordable housing. Was that a consideration for this development?
Nathan's here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that was discussions we had early on with Alder Revere. The site's pretty unique in that it has both a landmark building that's being retained as well as an adjacent landmark. So it was a trading between trying to get density to preserve the existing landmark as well as respect the adjacent landmark, as well as make the project feasible. And adding the extra height wasn't going to work.
Was it, was it because of, was it in part because of height limitations on Mifflin?
Um, I don't think I understand the question.
Well, the, the story bonus does not change the height. It just changes the amount of stories that you can put into the building. And as I understand it, in this area, there are limitations.
There, there are. Um, it's an eight plus two zoning. So we would have had to have gone above that height map, which I think would have required a planned development. Or getting those extra two stories. So you'd been looking at a twelve-story building next to both of those landmarks.
Right. So what you're saying is that allowing, is that if we had additional heights, if we had changed the height limit in this area, you, it would have, it would have been easier to consider or make it financially feasible to do the affordable story bonus, correct?
I would agree with that. More density always makes it more feasible.
Exactly. Okay. And then I know that the previous registrant spoke to concerns about environmental um, issues. I'm wondering, you know, many developments like this um, include different sustainability efforts. I'm wondering uh, if you can speak to any of those in this development?
I believe the architect is online as well and he could speak to those much more eloquently than I.
Okay.
Do we have? Let me see if I can suss out. I know, Linda, I don't know if you wanted anything. Is, is the architect, uh, Bert Coffin?
Bert Coffin. We also have our engineer too.
So it looks like, yep, Bert, you should be unmuted.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is Bert Coffin. We are uh, implementing several uh, sustainability initiatives on the building, including green roofs. We will have um, uh, EV parking. We, uh, this is a very transit-oriented site. And so we are actually reducing the number of parking spaces on the site from what currently exists by a few parking spaces. Because it's such a walkable site, we uh, the development team really wants to encourage walking and bicycling around the site. We are using recyclable materials on the building. Because the building is a type-one construction building, it will be at least a one-hundred-year uh, building, which means that um, this is not a building that will, this is just a building that will last a very long time, which is a sustainable approach. Um, we are also looking at, uh, we will be a solar-ready building as well and are looking at PV panel. There will be some photovoltaic panels that we are putting on the roof of the building. We're using um, all of the current strategies of um, low-flow water fixtures, um, dimming uh, devices in the hallways, several other strategies related, uh, such as those. Um, and we're using very efficient water source heat pumps as our mechanical systems in each of the dwelling units.
I see. Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan, questions?
Yes, for Nathan, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi guys, thank you for that information. I just wanted to get some clarification real quick. Uh, you had mentioned for the height uh, bonus, the affordability program. Did you mention you had already considered it or that you had not considered it?
It, it was considered early on as we were trying to figure out how to make this project work on this pretty unique site.
Okay, and then you uh, came to the conclusion it wasn't feasible, I assume?
Adding the extra two stories wasn't helpful. Um, what was done was the existing landmark was retained. And that's gonna be naturally occurring affordable housing. It's gonna be at a lower price point than the main project, but it's all gonna be integrated as one big project.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Another Alder is in queue with questions. So that will do it for item seven. Public comment. We'll move on to item nine, uh, which is the report of the mayor submitting resident committee appointments um, to be acted on tonight. One registrant wishing to speak, Rachel Neal of Black Earth, Wisconsin, representing East Madison Ice Collective. Is Rachel here?
Mayor, I don't see Rachel. Maybe there's someone named Mama's phone. I'm not sure.
So just a reminder, if you are logged into the meeting and wishing to speak, the name you display has to match up with the name that you registered. And Rachel, if that's you with the phone, um, perhaps try and raise your hand and let us know so that we can unmute you. Otherwise, um, we'll go on to item eleven, uh, which is appointments to the police, police and oversight. Uh, which is appointments to the police civilian oversight board. We have one registrant wishing to speak. Shadira Kilfoi Flores of District Six. Shadira?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, as some, as all of you may know, uh, I am the chair of Madison's PCOB. And so tonight, uh, you'll be appointing new members to this board. And so I wanna thank all of the council members who voted in favor of keeping as much funding as possible in place for this extremely important Office of the Independent Monitor. Uh, I was the community representative for the Community Response Team. I will be replaced by Stephanie Ririck. I know that she is going to do a, no doubt, a wonderful job. I'm very, very excited about the new members that will be joining the PCOB. Um, it has truly, truly been an honor to serve our community in this capacity. Um, many of you know that while I'm the PCOB, I co-founded Moms on a Mission, which is a community um and Department of Health-sponsored violence prevention program that al- also addresses food insecurity. We serve snacks to three to four hundred students every single day, five days a week, uh during lunchtime at East High School. Some of the other hats that I'll be continuing to wear as a community garden organizer at Badger Rock and at Tamalera. Uh, making my own seasonal tamales. Um, so part of my involvement, you know, with the community has been about offering support, offering care, and offering safety. And those are things that I have always and will continue to do. Um, part of why I got involved in the PCOB was because of our good friend and neighbor neighbors, Polly Henan, as well as Tony Robinson's deaths. And um I will continue to do the work of police accountability. While I'm no longer on the board, I would like to be pushing that to a state level, to a county level. Um, and I'm really proud of the accomplishments from being elected as our first vice chair, being elected as our first interim chair, and then um as our chair. Uh, we have, we hired two independent monitors. Um, one where we attempted, two hirings of attempted monitors. I'm really pleased with our decision in um Robin Copley. I have no doubt that she is going to do an exceptional job. I just wanna thank you. Okay, I just wanna thank you all so much for your support and believing in this really important im- important endeavor that we have embarked on. And that I appreciate that uh so many people have been paying attention and will continue to support. So, thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you. Questions for the registrant on item eleven, Alder Hilleh? Question?
Yes, um, Madam Mayor. Uh, Shadira, thank you for your service for this committee. My question is, uh, as per the ordinance, it says, uh, ten board members, and what I've seen in the ordinance, or the appointment is only seven. So does that mean there is uh still three more positions that can be appointed?
Uh, Alder, I think I can probably answer that. There are some folks whose, I think, whose terms are not up. And then there are some um commu- you know, you'll recall that we require nominations from community organizations to choose the appointments from. And there are some organizations that haven't yet nominated a, a full slate.
And what's the timeline if they don't submit names? Is it open to the public for other organization to diversify uh the slate?
Uh, so we're, we're a little past where we should be, Alder, in terms of uh this moment on the agenda. And so I would suggest that you perhaps reach out to the Independent Monitor, whose office is now in charge of receiving these nominations.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm sure that they can answer your question. Um, if not, I'm sure the city attorney can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinnney, did you have a question for the registrant?
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to ask the registrant, um, um, uh, I know of Stephanie, so I'm really pleased with the work that she will be doing. And as the exiting um chair, will you be eligible for any appointments on this committee going forward?
Alder, again, I think that's probably not a question for Shadira. Although you can, she may wanna weigh in. Um, it's probably, again, a question for either the city attorney or the independent monitor, uh, because I think that would be dictated by ordinance.
Okay, 'cause I'm not um asked, so uh I was direct-
Are you asking her if she's willing? Or if it's legal?
Uh, uh, well, I guess you'll help me to, to kind of parcel this out. I'm just trying to find out, um, related to her no longer being in that position and some other i- some other issues that she's dealing with. Will she be eligible? Well, maybe then, when I'm asking about the eligibility, that question then should be um more rightly centered around the uh Independent Monitor. So, so as I think past that, you, you are correct, because I'm, I'm really looking at eligibility.
Yeah, I think so, Alder. So I think that's, that's more appropriately a question for the city attorney or the independent monitor. Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison, a question for the registrant?
Uh, yes, Shadira. I'd just like to ask, is there any best pr- again, is there anything that you can impart upon us for the next group of committees? Or the next group who'll serve in this committee? And I just wanna say thank you for your service on this committee and all that you've done to get it up and going. Um, so yeah.
Shadira?
Thank you, Alder, uh, Madison. Yes, I have a ton of best practices advice. Um, namely being more communication with the mayor as well as, you know, the common council, so that you guys are abreast of all of the work that we're doing. Um, and, you know, the new, I know there's been a somewhat newer Alder onboarding. And um I'm helping um with planning that, a similar onboarding for the board. You know, we had a national training to know what, you know, civilian oversight is. And we had some, you know, policy and procedure, you know, as in Roberts Rules-type training. But we didn't really have some of the other, you know, boundary setting, things like that. Um, we certainly didn't have any training around the ethics, um, you know. So, so I have a whole list of things that I think would be really helpful for onboarding new members, including knowing what the, you know, the time expectation should look like. You know, that they should be prepared to join two meetings a month, um, minimum. And um maybe three maximum. But, you know, there were a lot of things that we came into this process just knowing nothing about. And I really hope to leave um the board in a much better place, you know, in terms of how to orientate people better to the board. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Yes, please, I hope you share that with, you know, the folks who are in leading, leading the onboarding.
Absolutely. I plan to stay uh available for any kind of advisory or assistance that the board is in need of.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder, and thank you, Shadira, for your service to the city on this matter and many others. All right, we have no other public comment. Uh, so we will move on to item four, which is Legislaw Eight Six Zero Eight One, a presentation by the Department of Civil Rights. And I assume that means that Director Davis is here. Norm?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay? Great, thank you. And do I have the ability to share my screen?
Arianna, can you arrange for screen sharing for Director Davis?
Uh, Director Davis should have screen sharing abilities.
All right, thank you. And hopefully everyone can see my screen. Great, thank you. So good evening, Alders. I'm very happy to be here with you uh this evening. Uh, I know that I, I believe I was scheduled for February, but um we're moved up to November. So um hopefully you'll find uh this information informative, and I'll be more than happy to take your um, your questions. Um, so again, I'm Norm Davis. I'm the Civil Rights Director for the city. Uh, my pronouns are he and him. And um it's really my pleasure to lead um this, this group of uh, of very committed, passionate folks uh that, that serve in the Department of Civil Rights. Um, I'm gonna go through our presentation tonight and um uh just share with you a bit of an objective of who we are. Uh, brief history of the department. I really wanna focus on our connections and collaborations. Uh, we have uh not just one host, but probably hosts of uh internal, external stakeholders, partners uh that we really depend on um to uh, to carry forward the work. And I'll talk a little bit about our three services, access, education, and accountability, and how that uh, how that shows up in our everyday work. And then um, then I'll have an ask uh for you as a common council at the end, uh how you can connect to um the way that we do our work. We, we um have a, a, a model that we use called the Inspire Model. And hopefully you'll be inspired to um, uh, to find ways to connect, more ways to connect to our work. So um just briefly, I wanna share with you that um we um uh carry this legacy of um civil rights, of uh progressive policies. Um, since nineteen sixty-three, uh our, our ordinances date back uh and actually predate the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four uh for Equal Opportunities Commission. Our affirmative action policies came about ten years later. Uh, so we've recently celebrated uh the sixtieth anniversary for equal opportunities and the fiftieth anniversary for affirmative action. Um, uh, some of you uh act- were actually able to take part in some of those celebrations, so thank you for that. And um, uh, the Department of Civil Rights uh was actually created around two thousand and six, uh bringing affirmative action and equal opportunities together under one roof. Uh, so we've been officially a department for what, about eighteen years? And um it was uh with an eye toward uh racial equity and social justice uh that um, we really uh started to think differently about the work in the department, uh started to think more proactively. We're always gonna, you know, have this responsibility uh for regulation and compliance, for investigations and complaints. Uh, but the racial equity and social justice uh initiative really gave us the opportunity to pivot more toward proaction. And then uh with the support of the council and the mayor in twenty twenty-one, uh, we created the Equity and Social Justice Division. Um, and actually created more uh, more resources and support for the Disability Rights and Services Program uh for our neighborhood resource teams, for the Racial Equity and Social Justice Initiative, uh and our language access program. Uh, so our work has really, uh as I mentioned, uh changed, uh so that we are focused more upstream, focused more on education, uh focused more on analysis, uh equity impact analyses, focused more on training. Um, I just, um, I just, I had a meeting earlier today with um, uh, with one of the members of the, the Community Development Division staff. Uh, and they were, they were uh just talking about how impactful the racial equity analysis has been on their work and how um it has allowed them to modify their policies so that um, so that they are more um, more impactful for those members of our community that have been historically marginalized or, or historically underserved. And so we um, we, we work with every other city agency, uh whether it's with hiring, whether it's um related to contracting, whether it's related to um, uh new policies uh that they're developing. We um, we work with those agencies and um many of the employees of those agencies. Um, we, we provide resources for. So it's not just the uh twenty-three folks that we have on staff in the Department of Civil Rights. Uh, but it's also our boards, commissions, and committees. Uh, we have the Affirmative Action Commission, Equal Opportunities Commission, uh Disability Rights Commission, and our um Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Humanitarian Award uh Commission. In addition to those, uh you might be familiar with our Neighborhood Resource Teams, uh where we collaborate with agencies like Metro, Fire, um, uh Police, Parks, um and uh Community Services to expedite services to um those neighborhoods that have uh, uh been historically underserved uh in Madison. And um we try to be proactive to reach out to um those, those residents. Um, we, we have special events, uh we may have neighborhood dinners. Um, this is uh, um, the, the Parks Alive uh work was an outgrowth of the, the NRTs. And, and we also have uh racial equity and social justice uh teams within the city uh to um, to get a pulse of what's needed uh so that we can um marshal the resources to get um, get some good thought leadership around uh creating more racial equity in the city of Madison. Uh, what's important uh to highlight here is that our primary objective is to create access uh for um the residents uh and, and visitors for the city of Madison. Uh, it's our responsibility to help remove barriers and uh to make connections uh so that uh individuals are well-served uh within, uh within the city of Madison. So, language access, uh regardless of the language that uh, that you bring, um, when you want services uh from the city, uh we will serve you in uh, in that language. Um, uh, if it's uh employment serv- uh employment access, if it's contracting access, if it's physical or programmatic access, uh, we are, uh, we're currently working on our um re- uh revamping of our um uh Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. And so we're working with every uh, every city agency regarding their programs and their facilities. And um I just really appreciate the collaborative nature of um all of those agencies that are, that are, that are leaning into, into that project. Uh, within our affirmative action vision, uh one of the ways that um access shows up is, is through our inclusive work uh workplace environment. So you, you might be familiar with um uh our um uh non-discrimination, non-harassment policy, uh the trainings that we provide to every ci- every city employee every three years. Um, and uh, and the complaint and investigation process. Uh, you might be familiar with uh the work that we collaborate uh with uh human resources on uh to um uh help create some pathways uh for um uh maybe non-traditional employees. Um, also um making sure that uh, that when we do recruit, uh that we're reaching out to diverse sources uh for the city of Madison. Uh, but you should also know that uh because of our affirmative action plan policy with our vendors, we actually impact uh over a hundred thousand employees across the country. Uh, obviously, we do business with um businesses within Wisconsin, but we do businesses coast to coast. Uh, whether it is the bus manufacturer in California or the playground equipment manufacturer in Vermont. Uh, and our um, our policies that were prescribed here in the city of Madison are actually covering uh all of those employees of the vendors that we do business with. Um, so that's something that we um, that we're very, very proud of. And then um we also uh create, help create economic opportunity and wealth. Uh, we, we certify um targeted businesses, which uh I have specific categories like small, minority-owned, disadvantaged, uh women-owned businesses. And we um, we work hard to help make sure that they are included on our projects. For example, uh with the East-West BRT project, we um, uh, we actually exceeded our goal uh on- uh we actually exceeded our goal uh on on that project for disadvantaged businesses. And on um on that project, that was around sixty million dollars, we actually uh attained twenty-five percent or or a quarter of that work uh went to disadvantaged businesses. So we're helping to create that economic opportunity as well. And then we um we educate our businesses, uh it's it's not always easy, especially for small businesses to know how to work with government. And so um we take the opportunity not only to educate businesses how to work with the city of Madison, but we partner with uh some of our other local jurisdictions like State Department of Transportation, uh Dane County, and we um uh we hold sessions to help uh those uh those businesses understand how to how to work for government. And then, of course, there's always the accountability, um setting goals for projects, monitoring uh monitoring those contracts, making sure that uh the commitments that were made at the uh at the beginning of contracts are actually carried through. And then, of course, um conducting any investigations uh that that are necessary. Within our Equal Opportunities Division, um you know, uh again, this is some of our longest-standing work. And so um this this uh area of work is really important to help make sure that everyone can live and work free of discrimination in Madison. Um we um we take complaints of uh harassment or discrimination uh citywide, uh it's within the geographic bounds of the city of Madison. That happened in Madison, uh we can typically take those complaints, there are some jurisdictions that we do not cover uh such as uh the School District and other um other municipalities, but uh we cover the the Madison area. Um and the areas that are covered are employment, housing, places of public accommodation, uh and city facilities and services are are covered as well. We partner with uh community-based organizations to provide a safe place, a uh a trusted source out in the community uh so that individuals uh that um where it's inconvenient for them to come downtown or uh if they um are um a bit hesitant to come uh into a government building, that's not a barrier for them uh to uh file a complaint of discrimination with us. We have um uh the most uh protected classes um across the nation of any municipality. And we um we actually uh uh have the benefit of being able to uh create settlements um uh and and awards for individuals that have been uh harmed by harassment or discrimination, and so um these figures here are just settlement amounts over the last several years for individuals that uh that that have had a complaint of uh harassment or discrimination uh against a, you know, a third party in um in in Madison and and you can see the uh the amounts that they have uh that they've been awarded. Um I really like this slide because it shows some of the interconnectivity of our work, and so while this complaint portal uh is part of the equal opportunity side, uh it's supported through language access uh so that we're able to actually offer a complaint system uh in um in the six languages that you that you see listed here. Um within our Equity and Social Justice Division, um you know, we um we, this is, this is where we've had the opportunity to really take a much more proactive approach and um in doing so, you know, we we think more uh more highly, more nobly about uh about the impact of our work and uh where we can uh where we can take our work. And so we're inspired by uh this um this quote from Fannie L. Hammer that uh nobody's free until everybody's free and uh so that that helps to guide how we uh how we approach our work. As I mentioned, um we have our Neighborhood Resource Teams and uh and and we collaborate with uh uh community organizations as well as city um city um city agencies, community organizations like uh uh MSCR uh through the School District and um uh we really try to get that that broad approach to the community to make sure that that we're having the impact that's needed. Our Language Access uh Program, uh we um actively provide training for our agencies uh to make sure that their front uh desk and frontline staff are ready and uh able to provide uh language access services whenever needed. We collaborate with the uh Latinx Community um uh Engagement Team and other affiliate groups within within the city. Uh and let me uh just touch on those affiliate groups, uh it's been um it's been a real pleasure of ours to partner with human resources and provide some support for our um affiliate groups within the um this affinity groups, I'm sorry, within the city of Madison. Uh so that uh employees have a safe space to go and collaborate um you know, um with others that uh that cheer uh their identities and uh it's been a very, very positive approach, we just a few weeks ago had our first um uh meeting of all of the affinity groups uh to come together and uh was a really, a really good time to just share some appreciation and get some insights into what's valuable uh to City of Madison employees. Uh and also, you know, in terms of accountability, our Disability Rights and and Services Program, and I think I I already mentioned the the primary project that's on our plate, which is the uh ADA Transition Plan. I wanted to share a couple of uh a couple of special collaborations, uh so this this collaboration is with the uh Wisconsin Alumni Research Foundation. Uh this started, I think, about thirteen years ago, um and this program um is a is a business education program. And uh it it really grew out of uh some compliance issues, but uh it's so much more uh than that now, it's 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 um it's a place where um people of color, women in Dane County can come and get free uh business training, it's a ten-week course. And um it's offered two times a year, so we, I think we've just um uh graduated our uh over five hundred uh members or five hundred entrepreneurs that have been been through this program. Uh so so this collaboration includes the Small Business Development Center, uh includes, as I said, WORTH, um our agency and uh a number of other uh organizations within the community. Um typically, uh businesses that are owned by people of color, helping to support and to uh help educate one another, um we have some, um we have a a regular connection for our, the different cohorts that have gone through the program. And it's good to see uh those um those business owners collaborating with newer newer members uh to share, share their experience and expertise. And then um uh one of the most recent investments that we've made is uh is with the Associates in Commercial Real Estate Program uh that is uh run by Lisk Milwaukee. And um we we saw this opportunity to uh provide yet another uh business training, uh but in this case particularly for those individuals that are interested in commercial real estate. And so we've partnered with the ACRE Program, we will be um renewing uh that uh that contract coming up soon. And um uh it's it's been a great uh opportunity, this program too has been uh in existence for about twenty years. And um the city of Madison has invested within the last four or five years uh in this program. And we're already seeing uh um individuals that have completed the program um working on development projects in Madison. And uh we also, we we collaborate with uh with our uh colleagues in community development um to um uh add some um uh incentives within the request for proposal uh for the inclusion of uh individuals that that complete this program. So um so I want to uh just offer to members of the council uh some, just some thought for how you might uh how you might connect to our work. Uh many of you are already connected, serving on um our um uh commissions um or uh working with our Neighborhood Resource Teams, I'm I'm grateful for um Alders that have uh asked for the development of new um new uh Neighborhood Resource Teams and uh and I'm uh glad to say that we've added two more uh Neighborhood Resource Teams recently. And um uh just just wanna offer to you that we're we're always looking for ways to uh improve our work, always looking for ways to uh better serve members of the community uh and uh and to collaborate, uh collaborate even further. Uh so I'd be very happy to take any, any questions.
Thank you, Director Davis, are there questions for civil rights? Alder Knox.
Thank you, um, thank you, Norman. Um I just had a question, um um I I really appreciate the presentation that you provided us, giving us some overview of a lot of the functions in your department. I guess, is there a another form or maybe a regular report where you give more um kind of nuts and bolts information regarding complaints and settlements uh within the city of Madison? Just kinda.
Yes, there is um, excuse me, there's um there's an annual report uh that is furnished by the Equal Opportunities Commission. Uh and I believe you have, um I think there is a copy of that report um uh as a part of the legislative, uh the leg star item uh today. Uh there's, there is also our uh affirmative action, um or I should say it's it's been renamed our Equity Action Plan uh in which we uh it's much more of an internal look at our agencies and how well uh we are um meeting our goals in terms of uh representation uh for women and people of color within the city workforce. And that plan also um has um uh uh data related to our own um investigations uh internally.
Okay, and that will have kind of connect not only complaint investigations, but its relationship to settlements, you know, kinda looking at those two things? Or is that from less management?
Uh so, let's see, so I don't wanna conflate things, so the settlements that I'm speaking of are related to complaints that were filed by members of the community against another party, against another entity, uh not the city of Madison. Uh and so those uh those settlements are the result of our um uh mediation, uh mediating those complaints uh or conciliating those complaints uh so that um they they don't ultimately have to go to hearing. Uh but, you know, the parties decide to settle. And and that report is is within the uh the Equal Opportunities Report that's that's attached to the legislative item.
So so how do we gauge the temperature or the environment in terms of how we deal with issues of equity and things within the city of Madison, do you do any kind of um um uh agency climate surveys or things like that, exit interviews, what, how do you gauge how the city as as employment is doing in terms of that?
Yeah, that's a very good question, thank you, so I think there are, there are a few ways that we do that, so I know that our Human Resources Department does conduct exit interviews. Uh we've collaborated with Human Resources and um some of our affinity groups, uh the Multicultural Affairs Committee uh and used to be WIC, but now it's the Gender uh Equity uh Team. And um uh to to create employee uh surveys uh particularly with an eye toward racial equity. And so we are in the process of um providing uh or creating more structure for those surveys. Uh in the past, those surveys were really led by our um uh those those affinity groups. Uh but we we didn't uh we didn't wanna continue to have them burdened uh by doing that work, and so we're creating more um more structure uh and uh and so we're working on uh with a consultant to build that out right now.
And so we should see some of that coming in the future.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've we've done it in the past and it'll it'll also come in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Vinnever.
Thank you, um you mentioned affinity groups as one method for um kind of creating uh inclusive culture within the city of Madison. Uh and I know that there's a lot that you do, but could you maybe just give us like top three highlights, um and maybe also just tell us a little bit, since you brought up the affinity groups, how those have worked? And um if you've evaluated those.
Sure, um so so I think the uh a lot of it is pretty new, uh it's relatively new. And um you know, we had, we had affinity groups uh for a while, um uh well, two and well, let me say three in particular, but we didn't have a a real structure for how those those groups are created. And so uh with the help of uh the mayor, we um were crea- able to create some structure for new affinity groups, um so in addition to uh the Latinx Community Engagement Team, uh the Multicultural Affairs Committee, the um uh the Gender Equity Team, uh there is now uh the disa- uh the Disability uh affinity group, and there's also an affinity group for the LGBTQI um um uh individuals uh within the, within the city. And so um those, those groups um meet on a regular basis, we um we uh we come to those groups uh really informally uh just to um provide that space for folks to be in community and also so that we can um take away any uh thoughts, concerns that uh that those groups may have. Um some, some like uh like uh MAC and GET were uh were actually formal, formal committees uh in the past. Uh but I think earlier this year, uh the council voted to make them affinity groups and and that uh we were in support of that because it gave them more, more flexibility, they didn't have to worry about quorum and, you know, all of the, all of the rules, so. Um in terms of uh in terms of evaluation, um I think uh you know, we've uh we've relied on uh kind of anecdotal information from uh from the members and just to determine, you know, how well things are going. There's, there's sort of a fine line um in uh working with uh affinity groups and um being careful not to task affinity groups. Um or let's say overtask, there there's some, there's certainly some utility, like I mentioned with the with the surveys. Uh but, you know, I I think, I think we're primarily concerned with uh engagement um with the happiness of our employees and uh making sure that everyone feels a sense of belonging. And so um so so that's, that's where we are now, we we may look to evaluate that more, you know, in a more structured way in the future.
Sorry, and are there other sort of actual programs that are designed to provide an inclusive environment, whether it's training for managers or all-staff trainings or um you know, posters or uh whatever you might be doing?
Sure, um so so part of that is our racial equity and social justice trainings. Um we've uh we've taken, I don't know, at least eighteen months, uh maybe a couple of years to revamp uh the way that we did our racial equity and social justice training. And uh so we've, we've been offering um a new training uh in collaboration with Human Resources Organizational Development uh that's gotten really good feedback from the participants, uh so uh that training is there to, uh I think as you said, offer some, some professional development and also Uh I think, as you said, offer some, some professional development and also um uh, you know, give some greater insight. Uh for our employees on how we do our work. Um, there's also collaborations with uh with uh organizational development around. Uh our customer service approach uh that we've collaborated on, uh around um the um. How we, how we ensure that our employees understand um how to. How to work with individuals that bring service animals into uh into the service space. Uh and there's uh, there's probably, you know, six or seven other uh other collaborations that we have that they try.
A notable one is the gender-inclusive workplace APM and training and ongoing efforts there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, um, Norm for the presentation. I just thought I could take the opportunity to ask. Uh, you know, I met with you and Alder Wahili in the last, I don't know when, a while ago, about like. Um the idea of having some kind of mediation service for between businesses and I'm wondering if. If you've been able to think more on that or work more on that idea?
Sure, um, yeah, uh that's, that is, that is an idea uh that that we discussed. And I think that um, uh I think that could be a good idea, you know, I've, I've heard from. A few members of the community, uh business owners, that that I think could benefit from some kind of third party. Uh providing some, whether, if it's not investigative so- uh services, it, you know, mediation. And so uh that, that's a policy um uh that, you know, the council may be interested in. Uh I think there, there are at least, uh there's at least one jurisdiction that I'm aware of, uh that has, uh that has that policy. And so, you know, I think it's um, it's determining, uh A, would we, you know, if we adopted that kind of policy. Uh would uh, would we have the, the kind of capacity uh to take that on as another element of work? Or is there um, uh, you know, would we need, you know, additional resources uh for that work? Uh but, yeah, I'd be happy to pick up that discussion with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wahili?
Thank you, thank you, Norm, for your leadership and doing this all great work. Uh can you elaborate? Alder Rommel uh question, which is, I think it would be nice to, for the elders to know. Uh the, the um, the intent of having business-to-business uh mediation rather than. Uh, as you alluded to, individual can file a complaint against um. A business, but business-to-business is the one that is not in our jurisdiction. And secondly, if you can talk about more about the uh economic opportunity. For example, do we have any business uh owners in our community that have filed complaint? Against the city? And ma- maybe I can wait for those two and then ask for a follow-up.
Sure, um, excuse me. So, so regarding this um, this business-to-business. Um either complaint or mediation. Uh right now, our policies only cover individuals filing complaints against businesses. Uh does not cover business-to-business, it does not cover uh individual-to-individual. And so. There are businesses uh that experience or have reported uh some hardship. In uh doing business uh in the community, um mistreatment. Um discrimination by other businesses. And right now, those businesses are. Um, you know, they essentially would need to um um go to court. Uh and uh and and take the other, the other party to uh to court. Um, within uh the city of Madison, um, we, we, as, as I mentioned, uh we could adopt. Policy of supporting those businesses um with uh either. Uh complaint mechanism and investigations or um or and or some, some sort of mediation services. Right now, the only businesses that receive that kind of protection are those businesses that. That are working on a City of Madison contract, uh that may be um. Working as uh one of those certified businesses that I mentioned, small minority women under disadvantage. If, if there happens to be a contract dispute. Uh or some sort of uh mistreatment on a City of Madison project, uh then we can intervene and uh and we do. Uh and and settle those issues. Uh the other part of your question was related to businesses filing complaints against the city. Um, so I don't think that I'm aware of um those businesses that are filing complaints against the city. I, I'm. Assuming that would be uh risk management or or city attorney, un- unless there's one that. Um specifically, you, you think I'm aware of, Alder?
Thank you. Madam, can I follow up? Thank you. Um, thank you, Norm, for clarifying that. So my other question is, I. I had a lunch and lunch last week, and there has been question raised about the um disability. In term of doing business with the city of Madison, uh if they have disability. So are there any specific um. Programs that can help people with disability? I know we have minority, women-owned and disadvantaged, but specifically. People who are uh who have disability, are there any programs and how they are protected?
Sure. A- and when you say people, are you referring to businesses?
Businesses, yes.
Okay, sure. Um, so one program that we have in particular is. Excuse me, is our disadvantaged business enterprise. Um, it's a, it's a federal program. And uh it um, it, it really includes, it, it could include everyone. Um, there is um, there is a presumption in that program that individuals of color and women. Uh are um socially uh disadvantaged. And then there's an economic disadvantage component to that. Uh but really, any individual uh can make a case. Uh under that program of social disadvantage. And so we do find that um. Uh individuals with disabilities uh have been able to um partake and and benefit from the program. Uh because of that, that provision in the policy.
Thank you. And my final question is, since inception twenty fourteen, the RESG. Are you where you wanna be, or there needs to be a lot of work that needs to be done?
Um, so uh, so, you know, um. Uh that's ten years. Uh and, you know, I, I think that um. Uh ten years of um really good work. Uh al- albeit really good work uh can't um uh account for. Um the uh the impact uh that, you know, many years of um inequity. Uh have uh have have brought to the present. And so, so I think that uh there's. Quite a lot of work uh for us to continue to do. Um, I'm very encouraged by. By not only our staff, but the, the staff in the city of Madison. I'm, I'm regularly in spaces. Where I hear individuals from the clerk's office, individuals from traffic engineering, individuals from. Um, the assessor's office, all talking about uh how racial equity. Um, uh uh shows up in their work and how the work on racial equity. Uh has, has impacted, has impacted their work. And um, so I think that. You know, continuing to um identify those areas where. Uh we can improve our programs, uh where we can improve our, our services. Um is, is something that we, that we need to continue to do. Um, you know, Madison is still. Uh at the um, uh at, at, at much of the, the forefront of this work nationally. Uh sometimes, you know, we might feel like, well, you know, are we really? Uh but then when we talk with our colleagues. Uh nationally, we learn that, yeah, we, we really are. So uh, so I'm very, very grateful to be in um. In the position where we're, we're able to lead uh some of this work. Uh but, but surely, um, you know, it's, it's not done.
Thank you, Norm. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, additional questions?
Actually, not a question, a comment. Um, I was recently at the um National League of Cities. And sort of what you said, Norm, I was in a um particular workshop on racial equity and justice. And you were talking about people being at the developmental and people being at the policy and, and moving to. Uh those policies being in finance. And they actually cited the city of Madison of being. You know, very well in the policy area implementing that. And so. I guess our next stage is to move that into, to the financing uh uh area. So. Just the mayor, you and Norm can probably take kudos on that. We were naturally recognized in this. Our racial equity and justice area. So, just a comment. See, I have comments, I have comments sometimes that are positive.
I appreciate it, Alder. And um the, the national recognition we get is entirely due to the good work of the staff team that developed. The RESJ program to begin with, um and then to the team now in civil rights that has incubated it and grown it. With the support of many other agencies as well. I have no other elders in queue with questions or comments. So uh thank you, Norm, for your time tonight. And for answering all the questions, we appreciate it. And. Thank you. And then that will uh take us on to the items excluded. From the consent agenda, uh the first one is item seven. Which is Legistar eight-five-four-six-five. Creating sections of the Madison General Ordinance is to change the zoning of property located at six nineteen to six ninety-nine West Mifflin Street. From PD to UMX. And items seven and fifty-two uh are regarding the same property. Item fifty-two is Legistar File eight-five-one-nine-three, approving a certified survey map of property. Uh for the same address. Is there any objection to taking up both items together? Seeing no objection, we'll take those two items together and President Figaro will call a motion on both, please.
Uh move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt items seven and fifty-two. On items seven and fifty-two, are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, is there any discussion? Seeing, oh, Alder Bennett?
Sure, I, I just wanted to quickly hop on here and validate um what Emily was saying earlier. I. Understand how in this area, it is really, really difficult to find affordable housing. Uh for students. And we've had robust discussions about this this term. Um, I think an aspect of that is particularly looking at this area in the Mifflin Street neighborhood and. Critically thinking about what an impact um further um. Making it more difficult to develop, more specifically to take advantage of the affordable student housing bonus. Rather than incentivizing it through taking a critical look at our height bonuses, um and what impact that would have on. Um, the future of this area. I'm particularly concerned about what the impact of proposals like Mifflandia would have. On future developments uh with this. So I, I'm not, I know that I, like, we can't. Deny developments just because they don't afford um, include affordable housing. We've very much learned that over this year. Or this term. But I, I just wanted to reflect on how this is an ongoing and persistent issue that. We will not um stop hearing about anytime soon until we address some of the underlying issues regarding this. And stop making it more difficult to build housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Viver?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't planning to speak, but um the testimony tonight also inspired me to do so. Uh this proposal was approved unanimously and is recommended to us by the Plan Commission. So uh, and I know that there's no doubt that it will be approved tonight, but I do want to uh pay respect to the testimony that we heard this evening. Uh I have exchanged emails, uh a few of them, with uh my constituent that you heard from. And, and totally um concur in her concerns about affordability, particularly for students. It is an extremely frustrating situation we're all very aware of. Again, I wanna emphasize what um was said in the public hearing from the development team. What you have before us tonight is a rezoning to allow for a ten-story building. The applicant, uh Trinitas Ventures, could have very well taken advantage of the affordable uh housing. Height bonus, but you chose to not, to do, to not do so. The same was true of their first uh proposal in our neighborhood. Uh in fact, in the city, just right across the Southwest Path and the railroad tracks, uh project they call Atmosphere. So, eh, we, as, as Attorney Wyatt here said, had conversations very early on. Uh encouraging the inclusion of affordable units in this development. It was the developers' choice to not include those affordable units, save for, as was stated tonight. Uh the naturally affordable uh um housing that will continue in the historic Weidenbeck Warehouse. So I, again, I don't wanna give the false impression that this is going to be a low-density or short building. This is a ten-story building. That we're approving tonight. Uh and I think the neighborhood would have been absolutely accepting. Of additional, two additional stories in height here, uh utilizing that ordinance that we adopted um a couple of years ago. Uh but that just wasn't to be in this case. Uh but I will echo what's been said that the state of. Um affordability uh for housing, especially those for students, is, is a, a critical situation. And it's one that I wish we had more tools uh to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other elders in the queue wishing to speak on items seven and fifty-two. Both have been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording a uni- unanimous vote? In favor of item seven and fifty-two? Seeing no objection, we'll record both of those votes. And that will take us to. Item nine, which is Legistar eight-five-seven-two-nine, uh submitting resident committee appointments. For your confirmation. President Figaro Cole, uh motion to confirm?
Move to confirm.
Moved and seconded to confirm. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record unanimous vote in favor of item nine. That will take us to item eleven, which is Legistar eight-five-seven-eight-five, appointments to the Police Civilian Oversight Board. On item eleven, a motion to confirm, President Figaro Cole?
Move to confirm.
Moved and seconded to confirm. On item eleven, are there questions? Is there discussion? Seeing none of either, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item? Seeing none of either, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item eleven? Alder Knox would like to be voting no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Abstaining.
We noticed as abstaining. Alder Wihilahi? Uh, Alder, you're muted still.
Have I paused the question?
Uh, a little bit. We're in the vote.
No, no, I, I just, maybe Attorney House or if he's uh, this, the uh, um, there are, there's three more positions, so I'm wondering if that's something that can be refilled in the long run. That's the question I have. Otherwise, I'm, I'm fine.
Absolutely, those positions will be filled.
Okay.
And we are currently, I believe, waiting for the nominating organizations to send candidates.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So, uh, the vote as stands is Alder Harrington McKinney abstaining and Alder Knox voting no. And the balance of the council will be recorded as voting yes. Seeing no objection to that count, that vote will be recorded and item eleven will pass. That will take us to uh, the end of our agenda. And item eighty-seven, which is Legistar eight, six, one, six, nine, um, regarding a forgiveness of debt with the Madison Ice Inc. And regarding various ICE arenas. This item is on for introduction only. Um, so, uh, President Figaro Cole, a move to introduce?
Move to introduce?
Moved and seconded to introduce. Are there, alright, so just to be clear, the only appropriate uh, discussion at this time is about referrals. So, um, if there is uh, questions on referrals, that's appropriate. If there's a motion to change the current referral schedule, that's appropriate, but no discussion of the underlying topic is appropriate. Alder Bennett?
My question is for both of the proposed referrals, like, what is the purpose and intent for moving the referral to finance to January? And what's the purpose um, and intent of referral to economic development?
Thank you, Alder. Um, your question is germane, but premature since at the moment the motion is to introduce and refer as indicated on the agenda. So if somebody wanted to make a different motion, now would be the time for it. Um, otherwise, the, the current motion is to introduce, send to finance on twelve, two, and to council on twelve, ten. Alder Madison?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I may have, or I may need to ask in a little bit, but in short, my question is mostly what will be the, the impact on this group, um, like the impact of the dates changing, I guess.
Perhaps you would like to ask staff if there is timeliness to this deal?
Yes.
That would be an appropriate question at this point in time.
Because that, that's what I'm most interested in. If we adjust the dates, um, what is the impact on um, this groups?
Thank you, Alder. Uh, I am looking to see who might be able to answer that question. Uh, perhaps Director Walker? Uh, no, Director Michael Jeffsky. Sorry, Matt, I couldn't see you for a minute there.
No worries. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so regarding, as the mayor indicated, the current referrals are scheduled are finance on Monday and then council on December tenth. So there's two considerations from the perspective of the organization that has approached us with this proposal, uh, the East Madison ICE Collective. The first consideration is that they are currently in the process of fundraising, uh, the three million dollars that they proposed to bring to the table. Uh, certainly, the sooner that the council is able to provide some directions on whether or not uh, the city would entertain this proposal, uh, the more likely it is that they will be successful and successful in a quicker timeframe uh, with their fundraising campaign. It's also my understanding that they have an interest in doing some work this spring on the facility. And again, the sooner that they can understand uh, that the city is open to this approach, uh, the sooner that they can perhaps uh, raise some dollars and line up contractors uh, to complete some necessary work as early as the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I guess there's a question. There's no real finance um, agenda set yet, so is the next finance in January the sixth? I mean, I assume so if Alder, um, Lattimer Burris is using it, but I just want to confirm because it's not in my calendar yet.
It is in my calendar. Uh, so I assume the answer is yes.
Because Dave showed his face, the answer is yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I do understand, having talked to Alder Lattimer Burris, that she would like to hold a neighborhood slash community meeting on this. So in the spirit of that, I would move changing the referral to finance on January sixth, coming council on January fourteenth. And I did look up that there is a um, Economic Development Commission, which is not in the initial referrals for January eighteenth. And if some people wanted to add that, I would, I would say that was friendly, but I'm not going to add it unless others do. So to restate, finance January sixth, council January fourteenth.
Thank you, Alder. So there's a motion to refer to finance on January sixth and council on the fourteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Alder. Moved and seconded. So what's before us is the revised referral schedule. And questions, discussion, additional motions on the referral schedule are appropriate. Aldo Uguere?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is just a, a question for Director Michael Jeffsky. When Alder Lattimer Burris and I met for several hours with members of the new board for Madison ICE and some of the volunteers and employees, um, they expressed a concern uh, that they had understood from staff that if this were not acted on promptly, like the original referral schedule, that the whole question would be put off for a year. That seemed unlikely to me, but I think it would be a great comfort from them, uh, depending on the result of the vote on this amendment to um, I have a clear statement that that's not the, that's not the case.
Director Michael Jeffsky?
Yeah, so Alder, I'm, I'm not sure I quite understand the question, but if, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, you're suggesting that there's a concern that if the council does not act on this by the end of the year, that it would be deferred for an entire year. And if, if that is the question, I, I, I don't see why that would be the case.
Yeah, thank you. That, that was the question. And for whatever reason, in the, the long period of discussions about this, as the proposal was developed, they had somehow, uh, quite a few of them had come to the conclusion that there would be a substantial delay if this was not done quickly. And of course, the concern is the, the one that you mentioned, that uh, they're in the midst of a fundraising effort. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lattimer Burris?
I was going to move to um, amend Alder Rummel's um, motion, but I don't know if somebody else had a question first and so I can wait for a second.
Doesn't look like there's anyone else in queue, Alder.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to, to amend, to add the, I wanted to amend the emotion to do a referral on, I think Alder Rummel said one.
Sorry, Alder, go ahead.
Yep. To do the um, economic development on one eighteen and the Bar, Board of Parks um, Commissioners on one eight, back to City Council on one twenty-eight.
I just want to double check those dates, so that would be finance on the sixth, parks on the eighth, economic development on the eighteenth. And council on the twenty-eighth.
Yes. Actually, I'm sorry, I had my date wrong. Twelve eighteen is EDC, I think. Or could you check that date?
Um, perhaps Director Michael Jeffsky can help us with the date of the next EDC meeting?
Uh, yes, Mayor. The date of the next EDC meeting is uh, December eighteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I misspoke.
So, Alder, the motion would be to December eighteenth, uh, economic development, finance committee on January sixth, parks on January eighth, and then the common council on January fourteenth?
Yeah, we can go back to the fourteenth. Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alder. Um, Alder Lattimer Burris, your colleagues did ask a question previously about the purposes of referral. It's entirely up to you whether you want to speak to it or not. But now would be the time if you wish to.
Okay, sure. So, um, I just want to give people time. Um, we've, John and I have, I mean, uh, have met with the uh, uh, we've been able to engage with the ICE arena, uh, folks. I, we haven't boldly engaged with the neighborhood and the community at large on this decision. So I don't want to rush people to have to make the case or to have to have open houses, uh, you know, you know, coming off the week of Thanksgiving, which is in two days. And then, um, you know, with this schedule, it put pressure to have everybody scramble to get everything done by um, next week, Wednesday. Um, so that's really uh, where we're at. We spent a lot of time on this. Um, it's been a fast schedule, and so um, there's a lot of questions. And I think it would behoove us to engage the community um, and to engage the public and to get feedback on this big decision.
Thank you, Alder. President Figaro Cole?
Um, thank you, Alder. I have a question for Matt again about, um, if he's still available. Matt, what, what does parks have to do with this? I thought that this used to be a parks managed facility, but no longer. So can you please explain it, what, what's their involvement on these negotiations?
Um, the parks was really not involved in the current negotiations, but yes, uh, back prior to two thousand and four, this was, these were parks facilities that were operated by the Parks Department.
It's okay. Um, but in these, I mean, so they don't have any, anything to do with them at this moment? And, and these particular negotiations has, has nothing to do with parks?
Correct. They, they are not involved. I, I mean, obviously, I've had conversations with Eric certainly, but, but they have not been actively involved in, in the current negotiations.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Mayor, I have a question for you?
Yes.
So then if we send these to parks, what will be the ask of the board to do?
Um, President Figaro Cole, I, I can't answer that question, and your question does remind me, and I apologize to the council on this front.
We have an ordinance about this.
Well, yes, and I've, I repeatedly fail to uh, help you follow it. And, and it's in part because when I was on the council, we didn't have said ordinance, but it is in fact, uh, in our ordinances, that any new referrals from the floor must state a justification of why um, it, the item is being sent to a different list of committees. And so, I'm sorry, Alder Lattimer Burris, I should have been more clear, but could you, as part of uh, the maker of the motion, um, state the justification for including parks and economic development in the referral pattern?
Yeah, so I mean, they have to, um, as was the case, and um, when I put in a couple of different um, motions or, or um, you know, resolutions, you know, it, it has to do with economic development. Uh, because uh, you know, without speaking to, to the issue, you know, this is a lot of money that we're talking about, um, you know, uh, donating in essence or forgiving without going to the issue. Um, the parks, as I've done research and I've talked to a lot of people, I spent last week about thirty hours meeting with people, um, reading stuff, uh, taking out the pages of notes on, on, on it to understand the history, what happened over time, um, how did we get into this position? Uh, once again, I think this is a third time. Um, I understood that uh, when we made this decision last time, it went through um, the Parks Commission. Um, they did a subcommittee on it. Um, so I just want to do, you know, be transparent, uh, engage people, let people know what's going on. I don't have um, uh, a position uh, yet, one way or the other. Um, but I do have a position on making sure that we um, you know, get good feedback and input and engagement with the community all around and engagement with the appropriate boards.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
President Figaro Cole, did you have additional questions?
Hmm, no, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Uh, so are we in discussion, or I want to be making sure that I'm?
I think we're, we're weaving back and forth, Alder. So, uh, if you'd like to discuss, please go ahead.
Okay. Um, and, and so the, my, my input is that I'm uh, not the um, the Alder of the district and the clarification that the um, the Alder of nineteenth district made in terms of it's not going to be a year-long delay. And we talk about public engagement and we want to engage the community in a conversation. It's just that, um, um, and, and if this project is to advance and having it uh, the opportunity for um, uh, open discussion, if that moves this project all on uh, smoothly, I think it's something that we should discover. Uh, because uh, having it um, uh, presented and then having it uh, before the finance committee the following week just seems as though we're fast-tracking it. So, so my comment is, is that to have the community, uh, give the co, the community the opportunity to have the input so that when it does move through the process, it won't get hung up because the community said they did not have an opportunity to uh, to weigh in on it. So, so it's not a year that's going to be expanded. I think the way that it's, it's going, it's about a two-week, and I want, want to make sure that that timeline is very clearly stated and exactly what will be the outcome of, of offering it up for community input. But I, I think that um, you know, that's something that we certainly should offer the, the, the community because we talk about public engagement and we want to have those voices heard. It, it, it might not be the outcome what they want, but at least to give them the opportunity to express uh, what their feelings are, supporting it or not supporting it.
Thank you, Alder. What's before us is referral to economic development, finance parks, and the council in January. Uh, discussion and or questions, Alder Madison?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask a clarifying question about um, a portion of Alder Lattimer Burris's statement. I just want to be sure. I did um, uh, have an email thread today with just asking some more questions about this project. And I did not ask or see that they had received this kind of forgiveness before. So I just want to clarify, they have not received this level of forgiveness before.
Uh, Alder, that's, actually strays into the content.
Sorry. My apologies.
That's all right, but I'm sure that Director Michael Jeffsky would be happy to answer that question for you uh, over email right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, questions or discussion?
Sure. I think I, I just want, I'm open to the referral. I think I just want, I'm open to the referral to economic development, but I'm not seeing the connection to parks after what Matt Michael Jeffsky said. So if the referral to parks was taken out, then I'd be open to the idea of moving it to economic development.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris, additional questions or discussion?
Parks is not critical. I just thought it was part of it, trying to cover all bases. I'm really not trying to do this referral, you know, like, you know, sometimes I know in council it will just be referred to kill something. That's not what it's about. I think it's really about transparency. And just, you know, who knows what the community is going to say? It might even make a stronger case for it. So I'm willing to remove that. I'm willing to amend my amendment and remove it. The main thing is that we have time to engage and, you know, notify people, give them space to make their presentations to us.
Thank you, Alder. I'm going to go on to Aldo Uguere while I consider how many motions down we can get here. Aldo Uguere?
Just a couple of things. One, I think I would certainly agree with Alder Latimer Burris's thought about removing parks from the referral schedule. It doesn't change the date that it would get to the common council. What I do know from working over several hours with the board of Madison Ice, Inc., I think that included some of the members of the new board for the new nonprofit, is that Alder Latimer Burris has worked very hard to keep this moving at a critical pace. It was a matter of getting a date and a venue for having the additional neighborhood meeting that she suggested. So just want to emphasize that there's been plenty of effort there to keep this moving at a reasonable pace. It was just a matter at a difficult time to schedule things and to find venues to be able to make that happen. The other thing I would mention on this is that some of you may have seen that I published a very detailed blog on the exact nature, the very complex layering of the solution that economic development was tasked with to put this forward. It's just complicated to understand. Since publishing that and seeing that the people who work regularly with the use those two facilities, I'm getting a lot of emails. I'm sure some of you are. I get a lot of them personally. And clearly, there would be an opportunity both to give those who are proponents of the idea time to, because some just don't realize how to engage in these committee referral processes. Part of what I'm doing is to let them know where to send their comments. And then a few comments that are opposed to it. But generally, people who haven't had the time to really study the details so that their opposition, to a degree, may be based on misinformation or disinformation about how that process works. So I think this minor, relatively quick extension of the referral process is probably in the best interests of all parties, those for the resolution and those opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I think I'm going to try a procedural thing here, and the city attorney will stop me if it's not allowable. But I think what we might want to do at this point is if Alder Latimer Burris is willing to withdraw the referral to parks and there is no objection from the body on that, seeing no objection, then what is before us is a motion to refer the item to economic development on December 18th, finance on January 6th, and the common council on January 14th. And seeing no objection to that being the motion before us, it has been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of those referral dates? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of those referral dates. And just to be safe, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of introduction of the item? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced with the referral dates. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there any additional introductions from the floor? Seeing none, are there any announcements? My only announcement is Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I hope you have a great holiday. Spend it with friends and family. And Aldo Revere, it's your turn.
Happy Thanksgiving to one and all, and I move to adjourn.
Again.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.